Good evening and welcome to the Trumbull Board of Education meeting Tuesday, February 23rd, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Norself, correspondence.
Since our last Board of Ed meeting, we had six emails. Dana Meiser wrote in support of five days in school for elementary students and middle schoolers should have at least rotating Wednesdays in schools, she felt. Mrs. Tempinelli, Board Chair, answered Mr. Rosenberg's questions about the Board of Ed's authority and responsibility. The Board Chair also answered Kristin Nuscola's questions about a comment she had made during the board meeting. Angelique Fester donated 20 classic African-American books to Trumbull High School. She said she had concerns on the lack of Black history activities. Ella Grasso would like to see greater diversity among teaching staff. Those are our emails today.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to public comment. Our first speaker is Frank Sutchi Maro.
Thank you and thank you for your time. I'm actually reading a correspondence I sent in January 26th. I guess I just missed the meeting that day. It was not read on the February 9th or this meeting. It goes, "I would like to thank the Long Hill Elementary School administrators for finding a way to exchange Valentine's safely this year in the elementaries. It may seem inconsequential with us dealing with funding shortfalls, a pandemic, and various other challenges, but to the children, it was a huge deal. Once in a while, we need to try to view the schools through the children's eyes when making decisions affecting them. Thank you again for finding a way to get this done for them. Originally, this was not the plan, but when my child came home from school, who always says, 'How was school good?' Her and a lot of other parents, kids said, 'No, we're no Valentine's this year,' and half of them have been making them already. But we found a way through innovation, and I wanted to thank you for that. But unfortunately, this correspondence slipped through the cracks. And this is not the first time it's happened. Last year during the budget season, a correspondence with every PTA board member's signature on it slipped through the cracks as well. So we need to have a better system going forward. I know you're all volunteers and it's a tough job, but we need some more checks and balances, especially with the next budget season going through. And that's all I had to say. We have to do better, especially with the budgets coming through, and it's coming back to us soon. One more thing on correspondence. For all your parents who want to support the superintendent's budget and the programs coming back, the specialists coming back, we need to write the first selectman. She's putting her budget in on Monday, and she hasn't heard from anybody. So if you email the first selectman, that would be great to help her see where our money can be spent and where you want it to be spent. Thank you very much for your time and your volunteerism.
Thank you. Here, our next speaker is Sage Anakai.
Hi, my name is Sage Anaki. I'm a senior at Trumbull High School. I recently have been fighting within my school for the education of Black and Brown history. I have, growing up in Trumbull Public Schools, we have not spoken about Black and Brown history enough. Growing up, we have not discussed Black History Month. And, you know, that is disappointing and devastating to people of color within our community. And I don't only speak on my behalf, I speak on many other students. I've been in communications with my principal and other people within my administration, and we have been fighting to get some form of a club where people of color can come together and not only be a service club, but also be a safe place for students of color and provide education for peers who don't know much about, you know, the Black and Brown history. Along with that, I also wanted to quickly mention that, growing up in Trumbull Public Schools, I personally have never had a teacher or a person, you know, in charge who is a person of color. I wanted to genuinely share, you know, my want along with many other students for diversity, not only within, you know, we have students of color here in Trumbull High School, and it is very important to value and bring leaders of color for these students. And I just wanted to bring that up because it's important to mention the value of that type of person, like that representation within our community is so very important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on.
Great, thank you, and good evening, everybody. Hope you all have a great weekend so far, a big week so far. Just a couple of comments on my update tonight, and then I'll talk more about the reopening update later. First of all, we had some good news today on the athletics front. That news was that the DECD originally stated that only one spectator could be at indoor events, which means our parents were only able to have one parent in our gym watching basketball and things like that. And as you can imagine, it caused frustration with parents. And as a parent myself, I felt for that frustration, but we needed to follow the DECD rules. But thankfully, they actually recently changed those. I believe they were changed as of today. So communication went out to families, or will soon be going out to families, letting them know that we are able to have two parents per student athlete. So I'm sure that's going to make our parents happier. Mr. King, the athletic director, will continue to see if there's ways that we can start to increase those numbers, but it's baby steps. We want to make sure that what we're doing is keeping all of our folks safe and not causing any issues with unnecessary quarantine. But that was really good news. Obviously, we also received some other good news, but I'm going to talk about that around the vaccine front when I get to the reopening update. Some really good news on the student front. We had a few months ago, we shared with the Board of Education the names of students who were named to the National Merit Scholarship Program. Recall that we had the number of names of students. And I'm proud to share with you tonight that we had the high school senior, Grace Young, was recently notified by the National Merit Scholarship Corporation, and she's actually a finalist in the National Merit Scholarship Program. So Grace is among 15,000 students to receive this designation out of 1.5 million entrants across the nation. So Grace was actually, so we just congratulate her further that she was brought to that level. Next thing I wanted to mention is food service, and this actually is a bit of a positive spin to it. As you know, we've been facing deficits in our food service program throughout the year. It's been six-figure losses per month, which I've been saying that could translate to a million-dollar loss in our food service program this year. I'm making sure that that's not a surprise to anybody who gets to the end of the year. Betty Cinco and her team have been working incredibly hard. All the food service people at the schools are running like crazy to try to do what they can. So just as a reminder, USDA is actually providing reimbursement for every single meal we provide. And so the good news this month is that we're actually only lost $20,000, which is a huge improvement to some of the $100,000, $150,000 losses we were seeing. So I know it's still a loss, but we're obviously moving in the right direction. So I appreciate all the families for letting us feed their children breakfast and lunch at school and the ones who are coming to pick up the meals, the weekend meals. That is having a significant impact and is reducing our monthly losses. So I know it seems a bit awkward that giving away more food actually saves us money in the end, but that's important. So we're currently at about a $521,000 loss for the year. We're just hoping if we can stem these losses, we won't get quite to that million like we were predicting early on. And finally, just quick information about the budget. So we know that the Board of Education approved a 4.33% budget. Mr. Hendrickson has been working with our insurance carrier, and we could have some good news on the horizon about insurance. It could be that what we budgeted for, which we call our high watermark, could actually be less, so up to a half a percent less. So that would be really good news, and we certainly appreciate it. I know the Board appreciates it. I appreciate that any extra money that any department is adding to the budgets is a challenge. It's during COVID times. It's not an easy thing to do. I certainly think we've come in with a budget that's appropriate for our students' needs, but we recognize that this is not just a simple time. We're in tough times, so I just want to make sure I point that out. And besides that, that's all I, so the insurance will bring you, once we have that all figured out, when that's compiled and finalized, we'll be able to give you more information on it. For now, I can't give you an exact number, but that is my superintendent report.
Okay, moving on. Board Chair report. I don't have one this evening, but I am going to make some comments a little later as we go through the reports and action items. Okay, our next thing is an approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of February 9th, 2021. I need a motion.
Motion to approve the minutes as presented, Madam Chairman.
Thank you.
I'll second it, Lucinda.
Jackie seconds. Okay, anyone with a comment or any corrections or amendments to those minutes? No? Okay, I will take the vote. Tim?
I'm in favor.
Maureen?
Yes, in favor.
Mike?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie?
I'm in favor.
Yes, in favor.
Allison?
In favor.
And Lucinda in favor, all in favor. Okay, and that is done. Next, our personnel, Dr. Semel.
For personnel, we have just one. It's a request for leave of absence. We have Ellen Thomas, a grade-one teacher at Middlebrook Elementary School since August 2012. She's currently on child-rearing leave and is requesting a personal leave of absence without pay through June 30th, 2021. And this does, this request does comply with the Trumbull Board of Education Leave of Absence Policy 4150, and we recommend that you approve the above request.
So, Madam Chair, I can make the motion to approve the request for a personal leave of absence for Ellen Thomas, who is a grade-one teacher at Middlebrook Elementary School and requesting a personal leave without, through June 30th, 2021. And this is all in compliance with the Leave of Absence Policy 4150.
I need a second. Second, Allison, seconds. Okay, I just have one question. When did this, when does it start, this next leave?
I would say it starts immediately, because she's currently on child-rearing leave, so it would start now.
So it starts today?
Yeah.
Tomorrow, today?
I think it's just an extension of the child-rearing leave.
Okay, Maureen, probably, for her point of clarification, it's probably when her child-rearing leave expires?
Yeah, I don't have that in front of me, but you're right. It would likely be when the child-rearing ends, but I don't have that in front of me.
That date. I just wondered what the date was. Anyone else have a question about that? No? Okay, Tim?
I'm in favor.
Maureen?
Yes, in favor.
I?
Yes, in favor.
Jackie?
I'm in favor.
Bob?
Yes, in favor.
Allison?
And Lucinda in favor. Okay, thank you. Okay, next, Dr. Semel, the National High School Athletic Coaches Association.
Yeah, so we're excited tonight because we get to bring one of our very own teachers and coaches as a celebration to you this evening. The National High School Athletic Coaches Association. This is an organization, I did a little bit of research on this, was, became an organization in 1965. The way I read it essentially is there was not really this national approach to making sure that coaches were getting professional development and recognition that they deserve. And so in 1965, this particular organization came to be. They began recognizing coaches in football, baseball, track, and basketball in 1960. They've been doing this for quite a while, and then as the years progressed, they actually added all the sports to their recognition program. And in each sport, eight coaches from around the United States are identified as the finalists to be the coach of the year in that sport. Only eight coaches per sport across the entire United States. And tonight, we get to honor one of our very own, Coach Marcelino Patrasio, who we also lovingly know as Mars. He's the head coach of our Trumbull High School football team. And we wanted to share our excitement with Coach Patrasio, wish him the best in July as he travels to Lincoln, Nebraska to be honored. And we've asked him to come here this evening to say a few words and just know that we really appreciate his hard work and we're rooting for him as he roots for, you know, his student athletes that play in his Brownie Men. Coach?
Well, thank you, Dr. Semel. You know, I've been very, very blessed with having some tremendous players throughout the years and assistant coaches and people I played for, played with, and coached for. And one, of course, is our legendary Jerry McDougall, who, in my opinion, was one of the best coaches, high school coaches this state and this country's ever seen. Again, I'm honored to be nominated for this award. It's very exciting for me, and I'm also very thankful for the support of Dr. Semel, our superintendent of schools, Lucinda Tempinelli, head of the Board of Education, our Board of Education, of course, our principal, Mark Carino, as well as our athletic director, Mike King. That support means a lot to me, our staff, and our kids. You know, I'm proud to represent our football program, our players, parents, and our entire Trumbull High School, as well as Trumbull community. I am a proud Eagle from a long, long time ago, and I hope to represent our town in a great way. And who knows, who knows who could win this thing? But I'm just happy to be nominated and excited for it, and thank you very much for having me on tonight.
You're welcome.
Okay, I have something to say. I've known you since you were in high school playing football for Jerry McDougall, and you guys did a great job when you were there. I just want to express my congratulations on your selection. It truly is an honor for you and the program and for our school. Your strength of character, your dedication, your commitment, and respect for your players and coaches is phenomenal, and your genuine caring for the program. I know you're building the program right now, and we all see it, and we wish you well. And it serves us well, and it will always. Thank you for all you do. We're fortunate that we have you and you're a member of our faculty and our coaching staff. And I personally am so happy that you left a system where you could have stayed and had many more resources than we can probably give you, but you came home. And I'm so proud of that. I really am. And I wish you all the best, and I hope those people in Nebraska know how special you really are and what truly a stellar coach you are. Thank you for everything.
Well, thank you, Lucinda. I appreciate it. I've been blessed to be around great, great people in this town of Trumbull, and I'm very, very appreciative of that. Trust me when I tell you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Coach.
Thanks, guys. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next is our reopening update. Dr. Semel?
Okay, so in terms of the reopening update, our team, our reopening committee team continues to meet on a weekly basis. We continue to be every Thursday, but our committee is a group of excellent people from administrators to teachers to union folks, to our health people. So we continue to meet weekly. We've been doing that for the past few months, and it's been really helpful to get all the opinions onto the table. And I also continue to participate in the weekly meetings with the Department of Public Health and State Department of Education, where we learn a lot of different information about what's happening and what we should be looking for. We just learned yesterday, and people certainly learned it last night on the news, that the best news out there right now is that starting March 1st, all building-level staff are able to get vaccinated. So that was really welcome news from the governor's office. So right now, we're in the middle of trying to make sure we understand the specifics of how this is going to happen. So I'll be working with the local DPH person, Ms. Bango, who's been extraordinary to work with through this whole process, trying to make sure that we have opportunities for staff in the district, but also there'll be opportunities for our staff to sign up for the vaccine outside of our district. And we're going to try to make sure we find the best way to make sure all of our staff has those opportunities. Keep in mind that vaccine doses are still somewhat limited, so our DPH is not getting all the doses they request, so that could be challenging. And I know in our own town that we've had some volunteers who are working very long days, Ms. Bango was telling me about this today, very long days to just keep up with the clinics that they're currently running. So adding these additional clinics will be challenging if they don't get extra staff and help. So we'll be trying to work that out over the next couple of days, but clearly excellent news for us, and we're eager to get our, eager to get all of our staff vaccinated. So in terms of reopening itself, we've been discussing as a committee bringing our students back in on Wednesdays. So, and actually, there was a parent communication that Ms. Marcel had mentioned when she had heard for, that was actually kind of in line with the reopening committee. We're saying we need to keep looking for ways to bring our students back. So just to let the board know where we stand right now, we're looking to bring our, and anybody else who's listening, and I told a few parents that I'd be giving some extra information tonight, we're looking to bring our students back on Wednesdays, starting on the beginning of the third trimester, which is March 22nd. So it's just a few weeks away. And the current plan is that we bring our elementary students back in for those Wednesdays, maybe five days in person. At the high school and middle school, you would have to come up with a rotation, because we would still be on the hybrid line. So we would work on a rotation, the three principals at the secondary level would work together to create a rotation so our parents had it in advance so that they knew which days would be Wednesday A-days and Wednesday B-days, because the rest of the structure would remain the same. I think I mentioned before that we'd probably offer a few extra A-days in the beginning, because A-days have been deprived because of holidays and because of snow. And so we would be taking that into account, but we might not catch up on all the A-days at first, because that'd be quite a few weeks before we do that. Therefore, if we are going to be moving in that direction, and I'm going to finalize this with my team on Thursday, I can tell you that there's overwhelming support right now from our teachers and from our administration to keep Wednesdays as half-days. They've been so welcomed by our staff members, and I think what I'll do is, if we make this decision, which I think we will be, when I come out to you on March 9th for our next board meeting, I'd likely have another calendar update for you. And I would also want to bring out some teachers and administrators so they can share with you specifically how they're using these half-days. Just because I think it's good to see a different face than just mine telling you they're appreciated, I think it'll be helpful to have some of the members of that committee tell you about this as well. So that's what we're looking to do. Now, keep in mind, we're just learning about this vaccine news. So that could change the calculus, if you will, of our, be able to come back full and in-person perhaps after that March 22nd, at some date further down the road. But the state doesn't plan on vaccinating all of our staff until the end of March. And by the way, I read it, it was just the first shot. So we might not have all of our staff vaccinated until, say, April break or something like that. So just keep that in mind, that if we're looking to make sure our staff is fully protected, then that might not be until, say, like an April break time, if things go well. But it's not lost on me that these vaccines should help us reopen even further. And certainly, my goal, would be my goal, and I hope it would be other people's goals, that we would try to be as normal as possible by the end of the year. Because the closer we are to normal by the end of the year, then so many other positive things will be happening because of COVID, whether that be graduations, or I don't know what all the rules are going to say at that point, so you can't commit to anything. But I think we're on the right path, and as long as things continue moving forward, I think that's important. So I just wanted to give you this heads up that that's where we're likely heading, and I'll continue to keep you updated. But that's the likely scenario, bringing back people Wednesday, starting March 22nd. I think it's a Monday, but that week is what we're talking about. So that's the end of my reopening update. I'd be happy to answer any questions, because I see Mr. Yalomite out.
Madam Chair, if I could. So just to clarify, so are you saying that if we do come back on Wednesdays, you would start as a half-day Wednesdays? Did I hear that correctly? And then maybe eventually move into a full day on Wednesdays?
Yeah, I guess the hard part for our teaching staff is that I don't believe the State Department of Education, I'm highly confident that the State Department of Education will not relax their rule about total remote learning. So I believe that we'll be working with remote learners for the remainder of the school. It's those remote learners, and I have nothing against them, but that's what's adding to the responsibilities of our teachers. So as long as that responsibility is present, I think we need to make sure we're providing ample time, or appropriate time, to our staff to do that. So yes, that is what we're saying, is that that is a scenario that we can make work. Bring the kids in for the half-days, and these that get some more face time with their teachers, let them go at the half-day so we can still be with our teachers.
It sounds reasonable.
Thank you for clarifying.
Does anyone else have a question?
Mr. Ward?
Madam Chair, I note this is on reopening. Looking ahead to the future, which is coming, summer is coming very quickly, the reopening people talked about any type of a special, not special, but a different type of summer school program for the parents and students who, you know, might benefit. Or this is too, it's too new, I guess, or?
No, it's not too new. It's not the reopening committee that's speaking about that, but it's actually myself, Dr. Iwanaki, and our summer school programmers, Terry Buckingham, Cheryl Rule, we've already actually had a meeting about summer school and what it could look like. Because we already have like a reading recovery-type program in summer school. We think we're going to maybe need to amp that up a little bit. But we're talking about different possibilities. I can't tell you definitively what we're doing, but we're absolutely talking about it. And this is part of what the SRT2 grant is for. It's about catching kids up. So we should be able to do these things, try to make sure we provide opportunities for children who did fall behind, and try to get them up to grade level basketball.
Is this include free tuition for those students we want to bring up?
That is part of the conversation if we use the SRT2 grant finally, but I can't say that definitively also. I don't know how, we have to make sure, we only have, keep in mind, Trumbull got $700,000 from SRT2, where Bridgeport got $40 million. So we're not getting the same kind of support for this, and I don't begrudge Bridgeport what they receive, but you can tell, I use it as a comparison, that far difference in the amount of dollars we have. And we have two years to spend these dollars, so we just want to be judicious about how we spend them.
Do you don't see the State Board of Education asking for appropriation from the General Assembly Board, summer school? I'm thinking about statewide, our superintendent groups getting together and talking about?
No, I don't see that. I don't see the state doing this. In fact, I get a little concerned, because I think I saw on the governor's budget him using SRT2 grant money to perhaps reduce certain, I wish I could speak to this from a better standpoint, but I thought I saw something where they were taking away some of the money that was coming to education because of the federal grants, which that could cause a problem in the future, but I'm not the grant manager for the, I'm not the budget guys for the state. But I need to look into that, but I would be hard-pressed to see the state right now writing big checks to us for this.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
You're welcome. You're welcome. I have a question. We have a lot of sports camps that take place during the summer. Are those going to be able to take place for the kids?
I've been working with Cheryl Rule pretty diligently on this. I learned that that was part of my responsibility, so we're trying to make them happen. Yeah, absolutely. If, again, we have to follow whatever state guidelines are out there, but Cheryl Rule is putting together a complete summer explorations package, which will include the camps that I believe you're referring to. Yeah, because there's a number of camps in there. There's music camps, there, there's a whole host of things in there.
There's all different kinds?
Yeah.
Okay, anyone else with a question?
No.
Okay.
So that's, that's it, my update.
Okay, our next item is the social justice update, Dr. Iwanaki.
Good evening. I'm excited to share that as a district, we've agreed to partner with the State Education Research Center, also known as CERC, to engage in a dialogue regarding the equitable practices and educational experiences needed to ensure student success for all students in Trumbull public schools. Between now and the end of the school year, we'll be working with a district leadership equity team representing various aspects and levels of our school district. The work will include district student perspective, as gathered through student focus groups to be held at the high school this, this April. It's also important to note that this will be a long-term commitment by the district that will include reflection on our current practices, as well as development of new practices that help to ensure equitable and culturally relevant education for the students and families we serve.
Okay, can you give us a little update on the, the course? Is the new course that the state requires, is it, did it start this semester, or is it starting next year?
That's to be pivoted in the fall.
In the fall, okay.
Anyone with, everyone's, that's the Black and African-American, Puerto Rican, and Latino history course. And I've heard that in two years, there'll be a, a parallel course that they'll be piloting in English.
Could I ask a question? In order for us to be offering it in the fall, will in the spring, when we ask the kids at the high school to sign up, will that be included for them to be able to sign up?
That will be included for them to sign up.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else with a question? Scott?
Yeah, thank you, Lucinda. Dr. Iwanaki, thank you very much for this update. Can, can you speak a little bit more about what, what might be entailed in, in assembling a coalition as, you know, Dr. Semel has talked about this work involving a, a coalition. Do you envision having a group of the school community assembled, or will this largely be activities programmed by CERC to get information from the district?
So CERC usually starts with a core administrative steering committee, and then they branch out to a larger leadership team that includes a broader audience of people. They also work with students in the focus groups, and then they take it from, from that, from all of those three groups to plan other action steps that would be needed within the district, and what those action steps would be based on what they're hearing through each of those groups. So we don't know what those are yet, because they haven't met with us all to, to speak with us all and work with us all and review some of the things we are already doing, what people would like for next steps, and then give us advice on what they're seeing through their, their Educational Resource Center at the state level.
And I'm sorry, one follow-up. Is this, is this an established program of CERCs that if we were to, you know, go to their website, would we, would we find a description of this, or is it a customized program that they're, that they're doing for us?
It is an established program that I know they've used in several districts, but I don't know that they release all of the aspects of it on their website, as they do cater it to the populations and their needs. So there might be things that we're already doing in Trumbull public schools that don't need to change, and there might be other things that they'd recommend to us that maybe need some, some fine tuning or some changes or some additions. So in that way, they can't put down sort of a prescriptive approach to everything. They really need to know the community and see what we already have in place. So you can go to their website, and they do have some information on CERC, CERC's offerings and their services, but they don't have exactly what they're going to do for each district, because it looks differently depending on the district.
All right, just to chime in on that, Scott, so part of the work is, it's not this them telling us what we need to fix, but they do help us facilitate the conversations that we need to have in order to explore, you know, all facets of our, of our work. So I don't want it to sound like they're telling us what you need to change, this, this, and this. That's, that's not what it's about, but just kind of giving the opportunity for us to have the conversations that we need to have, and then be able to, as a group, identify what we want to set as goals. From there, the ultimate goal is to actually have CERC step away. So this is just a way to get started, to make sure that we've got the right conversations going, and then their ultimate plan is not to stay with you year after year after year. You embed this into your, your work.
Absolutely. No, I think it's the, the right approach, and I know that you've talked from the beginning about wanting a strong facilitator, because it's, it's very, it's very challenging work, and you need somebody with experience. So I'm, I'm very supportive of it and appreciate hearing about the progress. Thank you both.
Thank you. Anyone else with a question for Dr. Iwanaki?
No, no question. Jackie Norsel, but just like Scott, I thank both of you for moving ahead on the topic. It's very needed. Thank you.
And I think you should know too, Dr. Iwanaki, Jackie was the chairman of the Diversity Committee in town for a long time. Correct, Jackie?
Yes, eighteen years as the chair, the other years just as a member. Of course, I retired four years ago, and we just didn't get any administrators who wanted to step forward. It was a very needed committee, and it did a lot of positive things, not because I was chair, but.
I'm sure it was because.
Anyone else with a question or a comment? No? Okay, thank you, Dr. Iwanaki. Thank you for the update. Okay, any other questions for Dr. Semel while we're here? No? Okay, Mr. Ward?
I'll make the most of Madam Chairman, Madam Chairman.
Need a second?
I'll second that.
Allison, seconds? Okay, thank you very much for attending, everyone, and have a good evening. Good night.